I'd like to call the Board of City Council Meeting of the City of Bellar Beach, Florida, on Monday, October 1st, 2018, at 5:30 p.m. We all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Patty. Do you call the roll?
Councilmember Bean.
Aye.
Councilmember Gunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Pachowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Schwerer.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Nuttero.
Aye.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Aye.
Finance Officer Cruzella.
Aye.
Attorney General Burge.
Aye.
Thank you. First item is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Seven.
Second.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Agenda is approved. Item number two, a presentation by Nellis County Sheriff's Office. Sergeant McKnight.
Evening. The report from August... On the first page, you see on the parking lot behind, there's only one report for murder. There were no arrests in the month of August. It was in the other week. They have the activity page, there were 874 events with 173 police officers involved in those events in the month of August. Last page shows there were three crashes in the city in the month of August. And then there were 233 units of active investigations that were being issued.
Thank you, Sergeant. Any questions? I have one question. With the 24 directed patrols on the second page, do you feel that we're getting the benefit out of the times going into those patrols?
There's benefit for people appearing to traffic laws.
Is that all the directed patrols are doing?
Between the parking enforcement and police officers, any complaints that have been made, of course, yes.
Did any of those crashes involve residents or were those mostly transportation vehicles involved in that?
I do not have that information.
Any other questions in council? Okay. We have one other sheriff's department report today, sort of bittersweet. Deputy Vaughn.
Good evening. This is my last night for those of you who do not know. I guess it's quite pretty quick, five and a half years up here, and I pretty much have a good pulse on the city as to what's going on, what we might need, what we might recommend. I can tell you this, the most important thing, we mentioned directed patrols. The directed patrols that we have take up a tremendous amount of time. When I say time, it's not that we're not doing our job, it's filling out the paperwork that we have to fill out so that we can cover what the directed patrol is, which is already in our system as far as what the city wants us to do. They want us to go to the parking lots, they want us to go ahead and check for illegal parked cars. I got five today. It's just, it's easy to go around and do it. Did I skip doing the paperwork? Yeah, because it was faster for you to get to the other ones, and then I did them off the end. Do not malice when you're talking with the sheriff about issues in traffic. And I'm going to explain this. I was here when the sheriff was here, there was a committee telling him that there was such a problem with traffic and speeding on Gulf Boulevard and cars passing and everything else. We have issues when we have spring break on the Fourth of July. These are our two worst times out here because it's gridlock. It's just what happens. The traffic light has been improved as far as its timing, it's actually, and this has been nonstop all day, we've been trying to talk to them. That has been improved, so if you're in the yard, you can see a great improvement in traffic movement. The sheriff misunderstood, or at least he was told, the cars were using Main Shore and Hibiscus, you know, as a cut through because, believe it or not, YouTube and a few of the other apps will show that as a so-called shortcut. When that happens, we're usually over there, we can figure it out, but we only had about six cars. Well, the problem is that we created a directed patrol on that. Even my sergeant was out there trying to catch cars that were supposedly using this as a shortcut. It's not happening. We had a complaint that there was high speed on the boulevard. I have running radar, it's moving radar, it's always on, it's always monitoring exactly what that traffic's doing. Their average speed out there is 32, 37 miles an hour. That's your overall average. When you're talking about the 80th percentile, that's how you basically come up with the speed limit. 35 is perfect for that level. It definitely meets the criteria. We don't have people passing. When we do, you should catch them. It's so easy to catch them. Of course, they're speeding then and they get bold citations. But now that we have a decoy car out there, our average speed right at that decoy car is about 32 miles an hour. So we're not getting the speed that they have me sitting out there running radar. I'm hidden. Sometimes you'll see me parking right on the boulevard because if I line up with the car, they go, "Oh, that's a decoy car." They just be right by it again. So, but it's not happening. So you almost want to have one on the other. The decoy cars work, but now we get complaints every time you park in the neighborhood, someone says, "I don't want it in front of my house." So we've had that happen. Your city manager has an excellent control policy on what's going on in the city. US Commissioners probably hear from residents every once in a while, "Hey, this is what's going on." If you're not here in the city and you're not aware of what is going on, go out there and sit yourself and see what's really going on. If you're in the middle of it, pass that on to the city manager. He's going to be out, he's out here on weekends. I've seen him walk his dog, I've seen him drive and checking the place on Sundays. And he's checking on things. I can call him and say, "Hey, one of the machines screwed up, and one of the others screwed up one day, and one of the parkers screwed up." He comes out, he doesn't. But he has a very, very good pulse on what's going on. Get with him. You know, when you get a complaint, get with him. It has been marvelous, five and a half years, it took a little while to get everybody to kind of catch on to what was going on, but I think your next step will probably work out. They're in the process of trying to actually field, pick one, you know, that would kind of fit my shoes. And if you have questions, I'm going to hurry out the doors and I'll tell you the truth. It doesn't matter at this point.
Thank you, Scott, for the five and a half years. We're going to miss you. Item number three, Angela Christ.
Hi. Good evening. Angela Christ, Executive Director for the Suncoast League of Cities. So I actually have the privilege tonight of recognizing someone who it's just been a pleasure to get to know and be involved with her, wow, over the past several years, obviously, but specifically this past year. And so here tonight to recognize and thank, it's a manner, less than intolerant, for her service to the Suncoast League of Cities and the Florida League of Cities. In her term as First Vice President for the Suncoast League of Cities, she helped the local league increase its advocacy efforts in the fight for home rule, local self-governance. The SLC, through her leadership, was able to send a member of the Suncoast League each word, each week, excuse me, to Tallahassee during the legislative session to continue our advocacy efforts. In addition to that, we were the largest or the medium-sized league, but we had the most awards for home rule hero awards out of any regional league in the state of Florida. We had 14 this year. In addition to that, she had the opportunity to serve on the Florida League of Cities' Board of Directors. So not only did she serve on the Suncoast League as her first VP, but she also served on the Florida League of Cities' Board of Directors. And so I'd like to read a letter tonight from the Executive Director, Mike Cittick, and present you with a plaque. So, "Dear Mayor Nuttero, please accept this plaque in recognition of your service as a member of the Board of Directors of the Florida League of Cities. The Florida League is well-recognized as a national leader in municipal issues and has developed a high level of services and programs for its membership in Florida. We are pleased to provide this recognition of your significant contributions to these efforts. It has been a pleasure to have worked with you during your term of office, and I'd like to personally thank you for your confidence and support of the league staff in the fight for home rule. Mike Cittick, Executive Director." So I'll just close and really say thank you for your continued service and leadership, and we look forward to seeing you. You're not going anywhere.
Thank you. While I'm here, the next item on the agenda is the Award for Financial Reporting Achievement. Melanie. This is an award presented by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States of Canada. It's the Award for Financial Reporting Achievement presented to Melanie M. Cruzama, Finance Officer of the City of Bellar Beach. The Award of Financial Reporting Achievement is presented to the Government Finance Officers Association to the individual designated as instrumental in their government unit achieving a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. A certificate of achievement is presented to those government units whose annual financial reports are judged to adhere to program standards and represents the highest award in government financial reporting. Congratulations. Item five on the agenda is Citizens' Powerance. Each speaker should, will be recognized once and will be limited to a three-minute presentation on any subject that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Yes. If you'll come up and give us your name and address.
Rita Swol, 121 East Street. First, I want to applaud all of you guys for encouraging people to stand up to speak, but I do caution you on chastising on board. I don't know when the last time all of you guys were in this room with 140, well, you would call our residents. I know that Steve and I, my husband, was here with 140, we call them friends. So these are our friends, our families, and we love and care about them deeply. So I also want to say that some people aren't speaking with gratitude, it's more passion because he truly does love these people. And we all know that some of you are green and inexperienced, but respect is earned, not just handed out. Thank you.
Thanks, congratulations to everybody who's gotten awards. My name is Ray Controver. I live at 2840 Hibiscus Drive West. And I guess this is a sort of suggestion. We have a lot behind us, code enforcement, this is basically, that we've been dealing with for years to keep cleaned up. I spent approximately $600 cleaning somebody else's lot with all the foliage that comes over into my yard, drops in my pool. And I guess I have spoken, I think, to Melanie and several of the people here at the Municipal Building about getting that taken care of, and it hasn't been taken care of. And I guess what I would suggest to the, to the board here is that they assess a, I don't know, whatever dollar value, to vacant lots for the cleanup so that people don't take advantage of the situation and walk away from these lots, don't cut the grass, don't trim the bushes. And that's basically what I would, I would like to see. When I called and explained the situation, I was told that the city could do nothing but write a letter. And I said, "I went over to their lot and cleaned it for them, and they came back at me and told me that I trespassed on their lot." And so I decided I wasn't ever going over there again. And so my gardener has to hang over the fence, okay, which is dangerous, to try and cut all the vines and everything that are coming over into my yard. So my suggestion is that council take up some sort of a, something, okay, to assess vacant lots for some money so that the city can clean it up and backcharge the property owner.
Thank you. Stand with attention. Yes, ma'am. Jules. I'm sorry.
You never called me ma'am before.
Jules Chandler, 3207 Hibiscus Drive West. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but I did watch it. It was very long. Two and a half hours, that wasn't even at the end, into the last city council meeting, how long, September 5th? There was some discussion on ethics training, and such training being a reminder. It made me question, have all council members taken the government and the Sunshine Law's ethics training, including the council member who is currently sitting on council, previously served in the past, as well as the recently resigned member? So that's my question. You don't have to answer it, or you can. And is it understood what that training means? That's just proof of thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
The answer to that is yes. Everybody has attempted ethics training here.
Yeah. We don't, these are just their comments. Any, anyone else in the audience that has? Under comments? See no one? While closed, citizen comments. The consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve items six and seven on the consent agenda? Send them. Second? Discussion? Patty, do you call the roll? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda passes. The regular agenda, consideration of ordinance 18-06. Patty?
18-06. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bellar Beach, Florida, amending section 2-51 of the City Code pertaining to how early the City Council shall convene to conduct regular meetings at the City Council, providing for separability and providing more effective date.
Do I have a motion for ordinance 18-06?
Send them.
Send them. Discussion? We used to have the meetings later.
Meetings used to be later.
They used to be later, and nobody came.
No.
So that's why we moved it up to 5:30. You know, whether things have changed since then, I don't know, but that's why it isn't at 5:30 now, it used to be at 6:00. Any other comments from council? Any comments from the audience?
No.
Okay, seeing none? Patty, do you call the roll?
Councilmember Bean.
Aye.
Councilmember Gunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Pachowski.
No.
Councilmember Schwerer.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Nuttero.
No. Motion passes four to two. Item number nine, final report and findings and recommendations of the City Code Review Advisory Committee.
Given the fact that all council members were going to be provided the details of the minutes of each of the meetings, I just prepared a summary of the, of the committee findings and recommendations. Of note is that there were a number of issues that the Code Review Committee identified that required further investigation, that were deferred to the city attorney or the associate attorney, or to the city manager to review and make recommendations on wording or how that might be implemented. So I think we'll look forward to hearing from that when we get into a workshop. There were also, for the most part, when we, when we reached a recommendation, the committee was able to reach consensus. So there were actually a few items that we ended up taking a recording vote on, we just reached a level of consensus on the recommendations and moved on to the next one. There were a few areas where we had input from a number of residents who came to the meetings and requests for specific wording for the code. In some instances, we were able to meet them halfway. In some instances, we weren't able to even do that. So I suspect when we get to workshop, we'll be hearing again from some of these residents or from additional residents on, on areas of the code that seem to be still a bit of division. Other than that, I want to thank everybody who participated in the committee. I think we had nine residents, or nine friends, and two council members and one alternate. And we were able to get through the designated chapters of the code that had the timeframe allotted to us, and it went relatively smoothly. And thanks to Jackie Spoto, who attended every meeting, took copious notes, and to Glenn Reeves, who was also there and provided a lot of guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, Wanda, for your leadership.
Yeah, great job by the committee. I was very impressed, like, you were standing on all of those and was really impressed with the amount of dedication and participation that took place. For the benefit of the residents, if you would just highlight what comes next, I guess there's some confusion, I guess a work session and then a...
It is on October 11th, there will be a work session in which the council will then review the details of the, of the recommendations. I believe it's going to be in draft ordinance form. We're going to review the recommendations in draft ordinance form. The council can then deliberate, debate, and then decide on the actual ordinances, whether the recommendations, as they came down, stay as is, or whether or not we choose to change them, if the council chooses to change them. So that's going to be the next step. And coming out of that will then be, hopefully, the final ordinances.
Would you just repeat in November?
That would be probably the November council meeting for approval of the ordinances?
I suspect, given the number of ordinances, that might take more than one council meeting to go through each of, all of the ordinances, because we don't want to be here till Monday morning. I don't. And then each ordinance has to go through two, two meetings, that's why I appreciate you. Anybody else have any comments?
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your work. Okay. Item number 10, consideration of selecting applicant to fill vacant city council seat. We have six, or we had seven residents who had applied for the council seat. One of them withdrew his application, I believe it was today. So the procedure we will be following is that the seat, the person selected for the seat will hold office until the next annual election, which will be on March 12th, 2019. I need to confirm that each applicant, that they are a qualifying registered voter, qualifying physical resident, qualifying permanent resident, and qualified by civil rights. So I will ask each candidate when they come forward if they meet those criteria. Each applicant, in alphabetical order, will be allowed a three-minute presentation of their qualifications and their desire to serve. Following each applicant's presentation, council members may make inquiry of each applicant, and I will recognize the council members for that. After the council has concluded its inquiry of the applicants, the floor shall be open to the public, with each person being recognized for three minutes. Finally, after the public addresses the council, council members shall vote by paper ballot, with the results announced that an applicant has obtained a majority vote of the council member. The city clerk will announce the results. If no one maintains a majority of four votes, the applicant with the two highest votes, applicants with the two highest votes, or the three highest votes, will be presented for another vote. If there's a tie after that, the council may use an alternative method to decide the winner, such as drawing lots or flipping of a coin. Okay. So the first applicant, in alphabetical order, is Thomas Draskovich. Did I murder that too bad?
Uh, not too bad.
Okay.
I've heard worse.
Before we get started and before the clock starts, will you confirm that you have physically resided in the city for the six months immediately preceding the first day of qualification, that you remain as a permanent resident of the city during your term of office?
Uh, yes, in all those qualifications.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see if I have the stopwatch. Okay, so first of all, good evening, Mayor Nuttero, council members. My name is Tom Draskovich. I've been a resident here in Bellar Beach now for about two years. My fiancee and I moved here from central New Jersey, and we did that after visiting about 12 different neighborhoods throughout Florida and also in Tampa. And we ended up settling on Bellar Beach, really, for two reasons. One was the air, yeah. And of course, living a street block away from the Gulf and beyond the coastal was not a bad reason to live here. But the second and more important reason was really because of the people. So my fiancee and I spent quite a bit of time in our neighborhood talking to people, and it was really a strong impression that they left us a sense of community, and optimism about the future that really got us to make the decision to live here. Now, having been here two years, I certainly validated all that initial enthusiasm. But I also note that Bellar Beach, unlike many other cities, isn't without problems. It's obviously a city that is growing, things are changing, there's a need for refining and modifying some of the ways, some of the ways that things have been made. And certainly, while I agree that getting there involves change, I'm not sure that the end game here is just really just about change. I think the end game here is about developing solutions. I think it's, it is about listening to new creative ideas, gathering facts, making sure that we listen to the inputs of the various community members, and then working together in a very collaborative fashion to get at what those right solutions are. And I think guiding and facilitating those types of solutions is really what the community is looking for, the council members really, to provide us. And I also believe that it's in having that focus, that solution is the way of managing through change. So in terms of professional qualifications, I first of all don't come with any personal or hidden agendas or any political baggage, so perhaps some a little unique pathway. This is obviously a volunteer position, albeit a very important one, and one where I believe I can bring substantial value, primarily because of my experience and background and bringing solutions. I'm a former president, general manager for a council corporation, is in New Jersey. I manage a $250 million global business with hundreds of employees around the, around the world. More recently, I was Chief Marketing Officer for Chevrolet USA, which was a $40 million More recently, I was chief marketing officer for Shandora USA, which was a $40 million small, minority-owned female business in California, which I've been representing for the past three years. Prior to that, I was in executive management roles at Fisher Scientific, also at Henkel Corporation and Unilever. I had extensive experience in P and L management, built and managed many different capital budgets, had done a number of project management activities, negotiations, experienced the legal and regulatory affairs, and most of all, an accomplished leader, mentor, and solution provider.
Excuse me, I just heard the beep go off.
I understand. But I got through most everything. Sorry for sharing this time and consideration. Thank you.
Okay. The council members have questions for Mr. Draskovitz.
Draskovitz. Okay, just one.
Tom, you mentioned that you've been here a while and talked to people and made some observations. What would your idea be right now of what our largest challenge might be in the city?
I think it's getting alignment around what some of the top issues and priorities are. Clearly, when I sit here and listen to some of the comments back from residents, I mean, there are a number of kind of passionate, important points that I think people keep making over and over again. And, you know, whether they're the right issues or whether they're the right priorities or not, I think people need to feel like they've been fairly addressed, that there's been some objective discussion, that there's been input by the appropriate people, and that there's some rationale as to why things are happening the way they are. So if anything, I think it's people just wanting to be heard. I think everyone says the same thing, great neighborhood, great area, geez, we just wish that things would change faster, we wish people would listen to us, and we wish that we get to some solutions, right, versus just, you know, talking about all the issues that we have.
His question is really for the council, because I, Tom, as well as Todd Harper, currently have positions on the Board of Adjustment. So just to be clear, I would like to make sure that everybody understands the implications of being elected to the council seat, so far as resignation from the Board of Adjustment. So the real question is, going back to the board committee, do we hold a seat for them for when they go back, or do we go through an endorsement to fill a vacancy?
Whoever we are to put on the council today, if it happens to be one of the people that's on a committee, resigns, done, finished by 6:30 today.
At that point, not beforehand.
Yes, correct.
No, I recognize that, but then, when that person finishes his temporary, he doesn't move on to a full-time council seat because he's elected, does that person have to apply for the vacancy or...
That would be a whole new situation come next March.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear that everybody understands the decision.
Yes. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
The next applicant is Michael Todd Harper.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Michael Todd Harper. Todd's my middle name. So if you hear Michael and you hear Todd, you're probably just talking to the same person. I live at 11116th Street. I've been a resident of Bel Air Beach for about two and a half years, and part of the reason I chose to live in Bel Air Beach was exactly that, the community. I grew up in the '70s and '80s in Seminole, attended Seminole High School, went to US House, so I've been very familiar with this community and this area for a very, very long time. When I look at the idea of being on the council, really what I'm looking at is involvement in the council, involvement in the community, and representation. As I wrote in my application, this is not about government just happens and happens to be whatever is voted on. It's really about participation, it's really about vocalizing your input, it's really about listening to the community, about what it is that is important to the community, and ensuring that the community is properly represented. Part of this is without an agenda, part of this is without a bias. When I look at the community, you know, Bel Air Beach is a very unique community in the fact that it really has no commercial enterprise. So part of the agenda and part of what I hear often is about budget, is about funding, is about how do we go, how do we take this to market, how do we fund the flooding problem, how do we deal with code enforcement. So I think a lot of what comes into the council opportunities, not only listening to the community, but also is bringing fresh ideas to the council. It's about understanding grants, it's about understanding code enforcement, it's about understanding a lot of parts and pieces, but the idea here is that without a commercial enterprise in the community, we really have to think out of the box and think a little differently, how we accomplish the things that the community needs and what the council is trying to accomplish. So my opinion is, it's all about the community, it's all about representing the community, and it's all about doing what's right.
Council?
Tom, I want to thank you for having served on the Code Review Committee, and I'm glad that serving there inspired you to apply for this position. That's kind of gratifying. Based on your experience on the Code Review Committee and just having lived here and grown up in the neighborhood, what kind of suggestions might you have for us for including the city?
I think a lot of what goes into including the city is understanding not only what the city is trying to accomplish, what is the big picture? We have to react to the things that happen within the community, but we also need to have a big picture of what we're trying to accomplish along the way. And part of this goes back to being, if we have a big picture, as an example, if we have a big picture, then we have the opportunity to figure out what grants are available or what stages he's going to support the operation of the community. Either we fund it through the community tax base, or we fund it through other sources of income, but we have to know what it is we're trying to accomplish, and what sources of revenue that can be used to accomplish the council's goals.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harper.
Thank you, Reverend.
And Michael Todd. The next applicant is Joseph Manzo.
If you're tired of the status quo, then you always have the option of running for office at the next election. Those inspiring words written to me by Glenn Gunn in February 2018. Councilman Gunn, I'm here to accept your offer today. I'm here to accept the offer because, as I see it, there's four main areas that affect everything this council does. Finance, management, construction, and law. I'm the only candidate that has experience in every single one of those areas. Let's take a look at finance. I have diverse experience in all areas of finance. I've been a certified public accountant since 1982. I've worked for companies as large as Deloitte, the second-largest accounting firm in the world, I've been general accounting manager of New Jersey Transit Company and Sony Corporation, a multi-billion dollar organization. Beached the first set of bonds in the history of New Jersey Transit when I was accounting manager. Nice for construction. I can read a set of construction blueprints and specifications as easily as I can read a set of financial statements. I was the founder and creator of Sony Corporation and Castiel Corporation's retail stores in America. As such, I traveled around the country building and supervising the construction of multi-billion dollar stores upwards of $5 billion construction projects. I'm proud to say that every single one of those projects, every single one, came in on time and on budget. Never once did we have to resort to litigation, never once did we have a labor dispute. When I moved to Bel Air Beach, I acted as general contractor on my own house. I know this town's code, I know the county regulations, and I know the FEMA flood rules. When it comes to management, I've supervised over 100 people in my division. That is collaborative effort, and through my work with the individuals, my team has had tremendous success in each corporation that I've worked for. Finally, legal. I've been an attorney since I was age 46. I went to law school late. I'm actively licensed in five states, Florida, New Jersey, New York, Illinois, and Tennessee. My specialties include contract law, constitutional law, real estate law, and appeals. I've won over $1.3 million in litigation claims for breach of contract and breach of financial agreements. I've been court-appointed as an attorney in both Florida and in the federal courts. My mission for this city, I see several areas that I'm concerned about. Quality of life in this city, the code enforcement, and our capital projects. I'm also concerned about how this council is perceived by the citizens and the employees of this city. My overriding concern, elected to the council, will always be to do what's best in the citizens' interests and their financial interests. I offer you my unique financial, management, construction, and legal background. I ask that you support my candidacy for this council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions, your council? Glenn?
Any visible law experience?
I do not have any visible law experience, no. Constitutional law experience, I spend my day picking apart laws and procedural issues for appeal, and I've won several.
And you affirm all the residency requirements?
Oh, yes. I...
My, sir. My head. Any other questions?
Thank you for your consideration.
The next candidate is Anne McIntosh.
Madam, yes, council members.
Let me ask you a question first.
Yes.
Are you a qualified registered voter, a physical resident, a permanent resident, and qualified by civil rights?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Anne McIntosh. I live at 3100 Gulf Boulevard. I have owned my home for 41 years, since 1977, and it's primarily a go-to-get-away place that happened several times a year later, became someplace that I escaped to probably every other week. In 2014, I moved down here permanently. I have been totally wiped out by two hurricanes, endured many storms, had no beach for over 10 years, and dealt with a lot of other things. There was no sand key, there were a lot of other things, traffic was quiet. Why have I stayed here? Because I love it here, and that's why I came retired here, although I don't believe in the word retirement. I simply don't work for money these days, and that's why I'm here. I was raised in a family where service was at its core, and I want to continue that. I'm a businesswoman, career professional public affairs person and communications person, mother, and involved community member. As a professional, I was the first woman hired into the public affairs department at the DuPont Company. I eventually became a key leader in this communications force. I managed people globally, hundreds of people, I have responsibility of millions of dollars. I was crisis management leader. I led change. I helped sit on, I sat on small, secure teams that were responsible for billion-dollar acquisitions and joint ventures that changed mold for DuPont. My personal community service involves board and communications council for the Salvation Army of Delaware, President of United Civil Policy of Delaware, Women to Women and Business Reschler Scholarship Foundation, all of these serving dual roles. And currently, I am in my fifth term on the board of my condo association. I was selected as I was driving down here to live, so I can't seem to shake that. I'm really settled, I want to get into something more. I saw the opening here, I called my former neighbor, Dave Dunville, and talked to him about it. He interned, which I didn't know, was going to de-call, Maranataro, and she and I spoke afterward. I have no hidden agenda, I have nothing personally to gain from this. I simply feel that I have business skills and community involvement that I've had my whole life that would be of use to you. My objectives are simply to protect and preserve the unique character and charm of Bel Air Beach, the safety and security of its residents, and our property.
Heard the beep. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Questions from council? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Next is Seraph, Seraphian?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Let me ask you before you start. Can you confirm that you are a qualified registered voter, a physical resident, a permanent resident, and qualified by civil rights?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I found out about this position, and I've always loved this community. I don't envy your positions here, council members and mayor, because you're not very qualified. Apparently, it's very difficult to choose. Just part of the reason why I love this community is every member of the council and many of the other members' residents, beyond the fact that the community itself is physically beautiful, an exceptional place to live, the people in it as well are exceptional, everyone. And I won't say that I'm any better than the rest of them, without throwing my hand at this, about this community. I moved here in 1989 from Michigan, the other great peninsula of America, and looked at the municipality at the time. I was looking to further my career at this position, self-employed, on my own, just for a career position. I studied at nine hospitals in the outskirts of Kendra, Bayfront, St. Anthony, Buffalo, and I chose to live here in 1996. And I bought my house in September of 1996, so I have been here 22 years, and I married to a beautiful wife and have two beautiful children. I have a four-year-old and a seven-year-old, and I want to see them grow up and enjoy the fruits that I enjoy in this community. I remember back when we watched speed out in the Zeroposts, and we had very friendly policemen on the walk. Well, it's hard to see that, but wonderful officers. I've had an officer along for many, many years, so I know the officers. Great community, both police and citizens. I had never met any of you, because the city ran so well, you never had complaints, and so I just played under the radar. I have high qualifications, besides being a self-employed physician, some specialists. I was a grateful citizen, universal, about why did I do that? Because I was interested in American government, I mean, it's a fascinating, auctioned, British economy, and I studied constitutional law, nothing to do with healthcare, nothing to do with the city government, but constitutional. Because it was so many, I didn't pass the bar, I haven't taken it, because I have. I did it solely for enjoyment, and the wonderful people in the cities, President of Jamaica, Clarence Thomas, Esquire, you probably know all the lectures they have there, fantastic people in the country. Beyond that, I also own the bar, Clearwater Beach, something extremely daunting. Started out myself, used to be a donut shop, and I went to a state sale mall, I saw. I was looking for furniture, Crystal, I found it, a little bit, but the point is, I have a grand business, and I have professional qualifications, I believe.
Thank you. Council members? And then down here? Thank you, Reverend, sir. And last, but certainly not least, Stan Soper. Can you confirm that you are a qualified registered voter, qualified physical resident, a permanent resident, and qualified by civil rights?
Define qualified by civil rights?
I don't have any convictions against you or some... You have any person who is deprived of their civil rights to conviction for committing crime, violating a felony or a moral turpitude, should not be qualified to vote.
I qualify in all the above. Thank you, Senator. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, most of you already know me. I'm Stan Soper. I live on Fifth Street, south of the lake. Been there for 25 years, went through the no-name storm, which kind of qualifies me for the unique distinction of the flood and out several times. Most of you that know me, I don't have near the resume experience of some of the other candidates that have spoken. I have a couple of businesses on the other side of the bridge, and most of you know Kobe's. I own that one. I have a couple of other ones that do fairly well with Largo. I have a couple of other ones that do fairly well with my larder. My backgrounds, I went to law school, I was a licensed general contractor, I've done accounting, I've done sales, and years older than I am, done almost everything. But as far as what the council has done, which is impressive to me, and why I got my name on this list, look at the audience. You guys have brought people back. I remember sitting up on the dais, and there was nobody out there. This is wonderful. This is good. I'd like to be part of that. And with that said, I'm退出.
Stan, given your prior experience on council and the length of time you lived here, what single thing would you say is the biggest challenge we face in the city?
Camaraderie, getting to the people, shorten the distance between the council diocese that you're sitting on and the people in the audience, make yourself open and exposed to them, don't treat them like children, and don't try to make Bella Beach a different city than it is right now. We have a wonderful city here, and it works fairly well. We've got some bumps in the road, but then every city does. But we should not be compared to cities of 10, 20, 50,000 people. We're different. We don't have to act like they do. Let's keep ourselves small, keep ourselves together, and think about a friendlier community.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
So you?
Now open the floor to the public, with each person being recognized for a maximum three minutes. Yes, sir, I see. Marianne first.
Good evening, counsel. Mark Goldman, 437, 22nd Street. Just a few comments about tonight. One of the things that impressed me the most, I've been here for over 18 years now, and I've never seen this level of interest in folks wanting to be a part of the city council. So my comment tonight is really to those folks, and to folks who haven't taken that challenge yet, is that come March, if you're not the person that gets selected tonight to join the council, come March, you'll have an opportunity for more of you will have an opportunity to join this council. So please, after hearing the qualifications of everyone and the interest, I urge you to don't give up the faith that come March, there are going to be more seats available. And with the skill sets that I heard demonstrated tonight, I think this council will do very, very well with any or all of you on the council when the next election is over. So thank you for your interest, and appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to... Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Mountain. Sure.
If I answer all your questions, it's yes. I guess, I've been here for 25 years, and I've seen the city grow. And to answer your question about what I think the city needs best, okay, is, and I think the committee is doing, the council's doing a good job. I think that the thing that's lacking most in this city, okay, is structure and management. I think from what I've seen, I've had seven slips down at the marina, and I've seen some of the, some of the wastes, bad decisions, I've seen a lot of the good decisions. The underground, I think they want, when we could have done better, like putting underground conduit in, in preparation for putting underground wiring in when the Gulf Boulevard was torn up, and there were a lot of, a lot of decisions, I think, that if we had a master plan for everybody, which helps in succession of council members and understanding where our focus is and what our goals are, and establishing committees, okay, to work with each other and the community, to get input from the community for those committees, okay, for the betterment of the city, of what they see we need, okay, and then how we go about doing it and structuring a master plan, okay, for the city that will survive every one of us, okay, and will continue to make the city better, and will use our funds properly, okay, and prioritized, okay, to do the best for our residents. That's basically all that.
Any other candidates that wishes to speak? Let's see, you know one? The council members will vote by paper ballot, to which Patty has, right?
I just want to say, this is going to be a tough decision. There's a lot of real qualified people out here, and like Mr. Solomon said, that if you don't make it tonight, please, you know, come back in March and put your names down on that ballot.
Patty just passed up the ballot. Passed up the ballot. She reminded me that Mr. Hayward withdrew his application today, so...
Speaking for us, anyone?
Okay. Do we vote ranked? Pardon? Do we vote by rank, either just one, just one ballot? Just one. She's going to keep score. Mary Natero, Anne McIntosh. Councilmember Gunn, Michael Todd Harper. Councilmember Bean. H. Stanley Stan Sofer. Councilmember Schwer. Thomas Draskovich. Councilmember Shirley. Joseph Manzo. Councilmember Petrowski. Michael Todd Harper. Okay. Okay, we are down to five candidates. Mr. Draskovich, Mr. Harper, Mr. Mango, Ms. McIntosh, and Mr. Sofer. So we get to vote again. You have a lot of copies of the ballot, Patty? One more, six. One? Councilmember Petrowski. Councilmember Petrowski. Thomas Draskovich. Mary Natero. Anne McIntosh. Councilmember Gunn. Michael Todd Harper. Councilmember Bean. H. Stanley Stan Sofer. Councilmember Schwer. Anne McIntosh. And Councilmember Shirley. Joseph Manzo.
Of your two ballots, you now have two people who garnered votes from two separate people. You could try one more ballot with everybody again having these five candidates. After that ballot, if there's an additional party who's running, these two candidates are those who each own two council members.
Is that acceptable? So we'll have another ballot with all five people, and see what happens, sir. Mary Natero. Anne McIntosh. Councilmember Gunn. Michael Todd Harper. Councilmember Bean. H. Stanley Stan Sofer. Councilmember Schwer. Thomas Draskovich. Councilmember Shirley. Michael Todd Harper. And Councilmember Petrowski. Thomas Draskovich. Here's Patty. Anne McIntosh and Thomas Draskovich, or the three that... That's strong.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, as a point, I'd like to remove my name to improve the ability of these select young people that are coming up. Take my name off the ballot, I think that would help the council.
There's a good chart on that, just...
Three votes.
So two ways you could approach it.
We could take the, the top two in the last ballot, which is two and two. That's, um, Draskovich and Michael Todd Harper. Or you could take anyone that got two, which is, there's three, so it's kind of up to the council what you want to do.
I think to be fair, take the three.
The three that have got two votes, and I made my recommendation to take two, three, nine, each count two. So Mr. Draskovich, Mr. Harper, and Ms. McIntosh.
Right.
You want to vote again?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can print, ma'am, I can print more ballots, or we can use the same ballot with a side of which you prefer.
Let's do just a side.
Do you have something you want to vote, or do you want to take somebody, please, up there?
So you'll just be putting it on the side, not in the box. Actually, we're going to...
Qualified people in here, and they'll make their turn first.
Councilmember Gunn. Todd Harper. Councilmember Schwer. Thomas Draskovich. Councilmember Bean. Michael Todd Harper. Mary Natero. Anne McIntosh. Councilmember Shirley. Michael Todd Harper. Councilmember Petrowski. Michael Todd Harper. Mr. Harper?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion to appoint Mr. Harper as to the city council.
A move?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank all of the candidates too. Thank you very much for your interest in the city.
Mr. Harper?
Yes, ma'am.
If you would come forward, I'll swear you in, and then proceed to the council.
Excuse me. I need to resign from the...
Oh, yeah, did you have your resignation? Oh, yeah, did you have your resignation?
No.
I do solemn swear.
I do solemn swear.
That I will support, honor, protect, and defend
That I will honor, support, honor, protect, and defend
the Constitution of the Government of the United States.
The Constitution of the Government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And I duly qualify in the office. And I duly qualify in the office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And under the Charter of the City of Bella Beach.
Under the Charter of the City of Bella Beach.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of councilman.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of councilman.
On which I am now a volunteer so help me.
On which I am now a volunteer so help me.
Eddie.
Yes, ma'am.
You got a book.
Pardon me?
A book.
Now you're official. Our next item on the agenda is nomination and election to fill the vacant vice mayor's seat. Two members of the City Council have expressed an interest in being elected vice mayor. Councilmember Glenn Gunn and Councilmember Michael Schwer. Do I have a nomination for vice mayor?
I nominate Manda.
And a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I would nominate Glenn Gunn.
Patty has ballots, I believe, for the, um, vice mayor position.
Councilmember Butchowski, voted for Councilmember Schwer. Councilmember Shirley, voted for Councilmember Gunn. Mayor Notaro, voted for Councilmember Schwer. Councilmember Schwer, voted for Councilmember Schwer. Councilmember Bean, voted for Councilmember Gunn. Councilmember Harper, voted for Councilmember Gunn. And Councilmember Gunn, voted for Councilmember Gunn.
Congratulations, elects here now. Okay, moving on. Item number 12 on the agenda, consideration of Resolution 2018-23. Can I?
One second, I'll turn to my page. Resolution 2018-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, calling for a general election to be held on March 12, 2018, for the purpose of electing the City Council members in the mayoral three-year terms to establish the qualifying date for persons seeking elective office for the 2019 municipal election and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion for Resolution 2018-23. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments from the audience? Can we call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Councilmember Harper?
Aye.
Councilmember Butchowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwer?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Notaro?
Aye. Resolution 2018-23 passes seven zero. Uh, number 13, consideration of Resolution 2018-24.
Resolution 2018-24, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, recognizing City Government League October 22 through 28, 2018, encouraging all citizens to support the celebration and corresponding activities and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion for 2018-24.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Eddie, on the
Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Councilmember Harper?
Aye.
Councilmember Butchowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwer?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Notaro?
Aye. Resolution 2018-24 passes seven zero. Fourteen, consideration of Resolution 2018-26.
Resolution 2018-26, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, providing for an increase in solid waste collection and disposal rates and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion for 2018-26.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Discussion from the audience? Eddie?
Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Councilmember Harper?
Aye.
Councilmember Butchowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwer?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Notaro?
Aye. 2018-26, passes seven zero. Monthly Financial Report, Melanie.
Hi, everyone, everybody. I have presented you with the August financial report. And, uh, that puts us 10 months into fiscal year. And we are at about 73% of budgeted revenues collected. Um, actually, we are fairly over in almost all areas. And, um, let's see, the very last item in the revenue section is the appropriation of fund balance, which we have from last year's budget to balance the budget. And that will not be, uh, used until the very end and when we know exactly how much needs to be, um, transferred. As of, um, right now, that amount is, um, let's see, it's much less than the, uh, than the $800,000. It comes to about $226,000. So that would give us, um, over $550,000 left, um, that we would not have to utilize of fund balance. And, uh, I know last month when we talked, we talked about trimming up the, um, hurricane fund. And so we could definitely do that and still be within our budget for this year. And, uh, the same thing is true now for the expenditures. Uh, the items that are under budget or the expenditures are the same things that have been under budget all year long. Legislative, code enforcement, and public works. And that's due to the vacancies in those positions which are not filled. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question on the next page. Um, there is a CD that is going to mature on January 4th. Will you roll that over or do you ladder the CDs?
All the CDs are laddered. I mean, if you look at the, um, the schedule of CDs, which is on, um, let's see, which should be on page three. Um, those CDs, where are those writing? I'm going to get that page. Um, anyways, those CDs, um, as you can see, they're mature in June, January, November. Um, and so each one of them, I have to take a look at the capital projects as well. So when I decide, I don't necessarily, if we have a 12-month CD, I don't necessarily roll it over for another 12 months. Um, I request rates from the bank. And if we have a big project coming up, I may only, um, invest it for six months because we may need that fund, especially because we have several big projects that are coming up soon. So it all depends on, on what's coming up. Um, the SBA has recently changed their interest, um, rate. It used to be only like .19%, now it's well over 2%. So funds can go in and out of that pool easily. So instead of rolling it into CD, I may just transfer it into the SBA. And that way we can pull it out whenever we need and still get a good interest rate on those funds.
Thank you. Other questions, your council?
Yeah, I have a question. The appropriation from fund balance, the $800,000. If we don't need it all, why would we pull it into the budget anyway? I mean, I know we haven't spent it. So I don't think we proposed maybe using it in the hurricane fund. But we have so many capital improvement, um, projects that aren't really budgeted, aren't really paid for yet. So could some of those funds be used for that?
The reason $800 from unappropriated fund balance is in the general fund is to balance it. Basically, the money that we send over to the capital projects fund, um, is needed to balance the fund. And since there is less revenue coming in than budgeted expenses, we have to utilize that. Now, I've already transferred over, not 100% in this month, but by the end of September, all the money that has to be transferred to the capital projects funds will be. And so that will reduce that sum. But the reason that we've not utilized that $800,000 is because of some of the things that are causing those variances that I talked about. We did not have a permanent city manager. We didn't have some money in public works. We didn't have a code enforcement officer. So that's going to make our budget fall below budget even at September 30. And that's why we're not going to utilize all that money. If we had done everything and had a full staff, we would have needed that. But since we've not, there's going to be funds that are not going to be utilized and not needed, right? And so I'm saying, if there's those funds left over, let's look at making the hurricane fund fold. But as far as capital goes, that fund is always fully funded. We transfer that money, so whatever we budget, we have a projects fund. Even if we don't spend it, those monies are always rolled over and covered.
But as I recall, we were, um, those funds, those funds, we, we were, our, um, budget wasn't balanced, we're pulling funds from savings to balance it, if you will.
That's what, that's what $800,000 is for.
So maybe we just don't pull those funds, like we don't need them.
That's, that's exactly what I'm saying.
But you, you said we'll put them in the, um, in another fund of, um, hurricane, hurricane fund. And I think we talked about that was close to a million dollars in that fund last year.
We, we originally put a million dollars in the hurricane fund. And at one point, um, we used those funds several, many years ago, over 10 years ago, for change orders on the construction of this building. So historically, there has been $840,000 in the hurricane fund. And then the last time we spoke, um, and interest was expressed by council that they wanted to use, um, if there was leftover undesignedated fund in the budget, send over enough to bring that balance back up to a million dollars, which is what, $160,000. And we're not talking a lot of money, just, just enough to bring it back to a million. Um, and then, yes, the rest would be available for other budgeting in future years.
Can I ask a question? Is, does the council want us, do you want us to transfer that money and bring the hurricane fund back up?
I think it makes sense to have the hurricane fund back to a million dollars.
For my sense of it.
Yes.
So that'll be a closing entry in September 30 and be part of the closing for the audit, so that'll get done.
Thank you very much, Melanie. This is on your excellence in accounting. Your award. Okay, item 16, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a professional services contract for undergrounding utilities in the Bellevue Estates Islands. Lynn?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is for the undergrounding project. We received two, uh, proposals. Uh, one from Utility Consultants of Florida LLC and one from Dual and Associates. Uh, staff looked at them. I also asked, uh, separately asked a couple of council members to look at them and I also gave, um, the chairman of the Undergrounding Committee a copy and review. Staff, and the feedback I received is recommending that we, uh, negotiate a contract with you, Utility Consultants of Florida LLC. That contract will come back to the council for your approval, uh, so we can move this project forward. Uh, so that's what I'm requesting.
Since such dual is one of our retained engineering consultants, why were the strengths of utility consultants above the annual?
Dual's proposal had no background in utility undergrounding whatsoever. They're an engineering firm, but, uh, utility consultants is currently working on in Longropie and they're also working in Brayton Beach. So they have several years of experience and that was really the difference.
Thank you.
Will, will that contract start to build a scoping project? So I, I guess what I would like to do is just make sure, you know, and it was, I think we, we discussed that briefly, but to make sure that the residents have a line of communication with you and ability to have scoping, approving that before it goes to the final.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Do we, do we need a motion on that or does the consensus of council to authorize it?
We need a vote.
Okay, I have a motion to authorize the city manager to go forward with this contract. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Poked? Go forward. Um, city manager, comment?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. I just want to bring a few highlights up.
I just want to bring a few highlights up. I will tell everyone that we did get the assessment rolling for the undergrounding project completed. We should be getting a copy of that here in the next week to 10 days. What they sent back, the numbers bounced, and the loan closed last Thursday. So the undergrounding funds are available, and we'll start the process with the contract with the consultant. And in the meantime, there's some things we'll be doing that do reference the right-of-way in the utilities. So we're going to try to resolve that. First three, Stormwater Project is going to start the week of the 22nd. We'll be starting to close first in Harbor Townside Traffic the week of the 15th. The project on Bell Isle, there'll be some one-lane traffic at the intersection of Bell Isle and Hibiscus, and that will start the week of October 22nd also. Both of those projects are non-leaked projects, but I expect them to be much sooner. Seawall on Bell Isle will start in late November, early December. We've awarded the contract. We will start working on engineering proposals for this year's capital projects on Third, Fourth, Fifth Street. And we are looking at, Public Works Group's going to do some dimensions of the water for the heat outfalls. If we've got funding available, we may want to buy some check valves to stop some of the flooding going forward in, on other streets. There's Rock Sale November 3rd. I gave you the monthly code enforcement report. Not a lot to highlight other than a lot of grass cutting. And most of the vacant lot grass cutting have been noticed that any longer than not cutting them, we'll cut them by the city and charge them for it. So you don't have to keep contacting. We talked about the code and work session on the 11th. The pipeline on 15th, we had an additional cost on that emergency repair of about six thousand dollars. So just, so you're aware of it, but we need to get it fixed, it's falling in. And additionally, homeowners are going to have to do something with the seawall. It's, it's losing sand, discal also. Filable forms, one of the consul members asked about that, and we have got several of them up and working. So if you want to practice on them, any of you, go pay for fill them out, seven coats. You've still got a sign, though. So we haven't changed that.
Do you take electronic signatures as well?
No, not at this point. And at the last meeting, he asked for the cost of the timeline. It was eighteen hundred dollars. And I got the, there are some others out there, but the one that I was giving a picture of was eighteen hundred dollars. So it's really the pleasure of the council, what they want to do with that, or do they want us to lay the lesser cost item? I think the cell phone works fine. Or a louder, or a deeper make, just brought up to microphone.
Also, I'll research a cheap one. That was the Rolls Royce version, hasn't been discovered yet. You might want to buy a cheaper version for four hundred dollars or something.
So I take it, we'll take it for right now. Okay, and just so the council knows, I have been dutifully selected to have jury duty this month. So on the 16th, so we'll, I'll for sure be gone the 16th.
Just, just check the website on the 15th and I can.
I will, I will. But I've been here 20 years, and this is the third time I'm being honest. I have people that never went to jury duty. But that's all I have.
Thank you. City clerk? Another? Unfinished business?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the candidates one more time. I appreciate your interest in the city. And like I said, March is coming up, put your name on that ballot. Congratulations, Mr. Harper, for your nomination. Couple other thanks, thanks, Linda, for committed, as she, the ordinance committed, as she oversaw. Thank you very much for all your, your hard work. Congratulations to Melanie, again, for your accomplishment. And Mayor Natero, for your accomplishment. Thank you for all your help in running the city.
Okay. I think we kind of wanted to city council comments rather than unfinished business, but is there any unfinished business?
I have some questions for Lynn, but this is in regards to this building and the air conditioning mechanical room that we have on the south end.
Yeah, we, we, are you talking about the vent?
The air vent.
Yeah, we're, we've already worked that out with the air conditioning company, got a purchase order, I believe, already to fix it.
I suppose. The other thing is the walkway in the south. I think all the surveying that's being done, we can survey that walkway so they can hear clear.
I can answer prices for surveying.
That's my. It's a pleasure. The walkway hasn't been touched in years. I know there's questions about.
What?
Utilities and different things on that walkway. There shouldn't be any.
We're talking about the walking path from the city.
Walking path from first all the way up to the park.
Eighteen.
Old direction.
Yeah.
If, if you're going to survey, then you want to do it all. And then.
So yes, I would, I would suggest that we give city good line approval to give pricing for surveying the walking path.
You say, Lynn?
Any other thing is security cameras in city hall? We don't have any?
No.
Think it'd be wise to look into what the cost would be for security cameras, so that we can protect the people working in city halls during the day.
We did put in a nanny button, but we can, we can look into that.
I think that door was maybe a little bit, they can see.
They can see who's coming in and out of the building. It might be a good idea to warn somebody that somebody's in the facility. And the other thing, any word from the county on what caused the backup, the shore backup on the issue?
No, they haven't given me any report on that at all.
I know Charlie Hubbard looked in something with the county at one time.
Sure?
Sure.
Oh, okay. I know it was on my store, but.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I just replaced the location of that one, the lot, so I have issues concerning.
When we had that massive rain, that was just well off.
Didn't know that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any knowledge?
I just, a couple of things. Well, congratulations, Mayor. And thank you for your service. That was great. This is your flag. Melanie, congratulations. And I just want to thank everyone for their participation in this, you know, opening council seat. And I know we've said, I've heard over and over, that there's going to be seats open in March, but that process starts early in December. So if you're interested, don't let that date slip up. Be in contact with Patty and find out the details, because there is an application and qualifying period you have to meet. And I think it's early December, I'm not sure the date. And then the, the other thing, you talked about at one point, and I know it keeps coming up, but Lynn, is the trying to get the overhead projectors working, so when we're doing presentation, everyone can see what we're talking about, or at least follow along of what we're voting on?
Well, they, they work. I did talk to one of the cities that was mentioned earlier, and, and they don't flip every page. All they do is flip if there's a question. And we would have to purchase a laptop connected to that, and someone would have to be there switching pages.
Well, I think what, at minimum, like when Melanie's on, if we have her overview of the financials, it would be helpful for everyone to see what she's discussing.
I think we can do that with just putting it on the overhead projector. That's, that's in that case. I don't, I don't know if it's got some those.
No, I, no, I, no, I don't never see these, these TVs work.
They work.
Okay.
Actually, we tried it out before the meeting, just to make sure.
The shares are, it would be nice to see, I, I'm sure that everyone would love to see what those, you know, and a lot of people are coming from work, they don't have time to print them before they come.
So we'll just put them on the overhead.
Yeah.
That's easy.
Thank you.
And, and, your goodest council member.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to represent the city and to be there. So I look forward to the opportunity to serve the community, and I look forward to working with the council. Thank you.
Lynn?
I stated before, I thought a terrific job, I want to add the code enforcement review committee. Whoever participated in that, I was very impressed with the level of engagement. Did your homework, you came up with the consensus for ideas. Great job by all. Just want to, hope that maybe the city officially recognizes everybody who participated in that, in a manner of appreciation or something. I echo the words of everybody else, as I already said, a lot of smart people stepped up this evening and talked about participating, how the council may each are coming over and please think about it, and then try to stay in gear with the city. We need those fresh ideas and fresh outlooks. Congratulations to Melanie on her award. I wasn't familiar with the government finance officers association, so I went online and I looked. And interestingly. Patty, I'll tell you what, could you, could you hand out these to the council members? So I, I took a look, and it was interesting, because one of the things they profess is best practices. And it talks about how best practices contribute to improve government management practices that are proactive steps that a government should be taking, both large and small governments. So that's just kind of the highlight there. Talks about, first of all, establishment of strategic plans. And interestingly, it talks about leaders need to develop a coherent and defensible context, context for all of their decisions. Talks about strategic planning to provide a long-term perspective for service delivery and budgeting, thus establishing logical links between authorized spending and broad organizational goals. So I know when I come into these meetings, there's a little pushback, everything, everybody's happy, we all sit around the campfire and sing kumbaya, everything's great, but I, I think there is room for improvement, always, always room for improvement. So if you look under the recommendations for strategic plans, right out of the bat, number one, initiate the strategic planning process, and the council is already taking that first step. Number two, prepare a mission statement. And it goes down line, identifying critical issues. It talks about agreeing on a small number of broad goals, developing measurable objectives, incorporating performance measures, and reassessing the strategic plan on a frequent basis. Goes into capital asset management. So they, it's not just plenty of guys coming before the council saying, hey, we need to be thinking about this stuff. Best practices are best practices, and they're accepted way of doing business out there in the world, any government. One best practice that we had talked about previously was a quick hitter, and it had to deal with council member orientation, especially for new members. So what I would ask is that the city clerk make sure that Mr. Harper get a copy of the codes, get a copy of the CAFR, get a copy of the comp plan, and all those documents that it seems that hit or miss, some of us have had to just stumble along and try to find out what is and stuff. So if we can get those documents to Mr. Harper, we can hit the ground running. And also, I don't know, because it's a short notice, but this IEO training is coming up this weekend, and so all the council members are going to that. And you might take a look and see what your calendar allows, because it's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday morning. Bingo, you can hit the ground, learn all about the CAFR, you can learn about the comp plans, you can knock out your ethics training on Sunday morning if you want, and guess what? You hit the ground running on all about this stuff. So I'll just throw that out there, and see, Patty, she can help you with all the details, and it might be a possibility. It's all good. Thank you very much.
All right, Mayor, I'd like to thank you and distinguished partner next year, and Melanie for all the hard work we've done. It's impressive. One more topic for Lynn. We have a dumpster at the end of 22nd Street, and it's become a community dumpster.
I've, I've spoken to them. As of, this Friday, told them they need to clean it up. I think one of the things in our code that will help some of that process with the stuff flying out of it is we've put in a recommend that we have to cover those structures. So that will alleviate the problem in the future, but I did talk to that company on Friday.
The other thing is it's been there almost a year, even one another. It's like.
Well, they can have that, but just the way that the code reads, it's a construction site. And as long as they do things with their permit every six months, it can be there up to the length of time. But it's a remodel job, as I understand it. What they're remodeling, I, I'm not sure.
Always seems to be doing it.
And a couple of times I've seen people there, but not regularly. It's kind of like the house on 2nd Street. They work a little bit, and then that's another problem. Yeah. Thank you.
I want to reiterate, congratulations, Leslie, congratulations, Melanie. I, I've always known that the city works well, but I think it's going to be working better with some of the things that we're implementing now. And I want to again thank everybody who put their applications in to run for this council seat, and to say that I'm in my third term. I have been unopposed all three times. So seeing so many people now interested warms my heart. Thank you. Yes, again, I thank everyone who has come forward. It's encouraging. And we've been to a lot of meetings, like the Big C and the Sun Coast League Cities and that stuff. But one of the most interesting things that came out from the Big C, on October 11th, the Clearwater Chamber of Commerce will be having a forum on the amendments that are going to be on ballots in November. And I know there's a lot of confusion, you know, concern about the number of ballots and stuff. And I don't know the specific time or place, but watching the papers for the Clearwater Chamber of Commerce for their ballot. I hope everyone has signed up over here on the right for the city's mailing list, email list, to sign up for that, we appreciate it. And that's all I've got. Anything else? Do you have any?
I, just briefly, I want to welcome, welcome Mr. Harper. I'm very happy, because I know that since you served on the code revision committee, you've actually been instructively sunshine law one time at the beginning. Paul Marino and I will catch up with you on that, since that is very important for you not to discuss business with other council members that come, could come before the city council. And welcome, congratulations.
I have a motion to adjourn. So moved. On favor?
Aye.